I'd like to call this budget meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on Counselor DeAngelo to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Thorold is situated on treaty land. This land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as Hadawan Duronk, the Honoshoni, and the Anashanabi, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people across Turtle Island that live and work in Niagara today. The city of Thorold stands with all indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands on which we live.
Thank you, Counselor DeAngelo. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? I've got Counselor O'Hara and Counselor Decker as presented. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Before we get opening remarks, I want to thank staff for the work that went into this budget presentation. I know the hours that went in and I know the work that was done and I want to just say on behalf of council, we appreciate all your work and we look forward to this budget deliberation. And now I'll call on our CAO, Manoj Dalwaria, to bring opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of council, and welcome to 2025 Budget Meeting. You were provided with the budget binder last month, and I'm hoping that you had a chance to review it. As done in the past, I will provide a brief overview of the draft budget. Tonight, we are going to present the draft operating and capital budgets for your consideration. Water and urban service area budgets will be presented at a later date. As you are aware, the city has been growing significantly over the past several years. As per Stats Canada's latest census, from 2016 to 2021, Thorold population rapidly grew by 26.7%, which is over 5% per annum, positioning us the eighth fastest-growing municipality in the country. Not only we are growing in the residential sector, but also in the commercial and light industrial sectors as well. The pace of growth will continue for the foreseeable future. The development is happening throughout the city, and we continue to strive to grow in a sustainable manner. The population growth has also translated into increased tax assessment growth for the city. For this year's budget, staff took upon themselves to come up with the draft budget while ensuring tax increases is kept to a minimum and only essential items are included in the budget. As such, senior staff from all departments work together extensively to prioritize their requirements to bring the draft budget for your consideration. It has been an iterative process, as we started with a double-digit tax increase. However, through discussions amongst ourselves, various departments, we were able to present the budget that is in front of you. Please note, despite recommendations from the organizational review approved by council in 2023, which recommended adding new positions to complement our current workforce, no new position that would affect the tax levy has been included in this budget. The draft budget reflects that there is 4.99% net levy increase, which comprised of 1.2% infrastructure and 3.79% departmental. This translates to $86 on the city portion of the tax bill for an average home valued at $278,000 as per AMPAC 2016 assessment. Our growth this year is 4.87%. As you know, city's portion of the budget only represents 39% of the tax bill for the average residential home. Other portions such as the urban service area levy, the hospital levy, regional levies, and educational levy constitute the other 61% of the tax bill. The overall tax levy impact will be determined after the region finalizes the tax ratio and tax rate. As per tonight's agenda, after my comments, Ms. Seetu Shah, our manager of finance, will provide budget overview in her presentation. Her presentation was put together under the guidance of our director, Ms. Maria Moro. Following her presentation, we will go to the departmental operating budget. After that, should you wish to bring any item forward for discussion from the deferred list, please do so at that time. After the operating budget, we will move to the capital budget for council deliberation. I would like to take the opportunity to thank staff involved with the presentation of this budget. A special thanks to Ms. Moro and Ms. Shah for all the work they have done in assembling the overall budget package that is in front of you. At this time, I will pass it on to Ms. Shah. Following her presentation, if you have any questions pertaining to any item, department heads are here and will be happy to answer them. Ms. Shah?
And I'll turn it over to Seetu Shah, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Budget 2025. As you know, city issues tax bills, which encompasses city regional education taxes. For 2024, the city's general budget taxes represent 39% of the total bills across all property classes, with the bulk of taxes being region and education. City has four budgets: general operating budget, capital budget, water budget, and the urban service area budget, which includes sanitary sewer and sidewalk budgets. The current package includes general operating and capital budget. As mentioned, Thorold is experiencing continued growth, which necessitates new infrastructure on construction projects progress. This influx of development will bring more residents, tourists, and employees to the area. As the population increases, so will the demand for services, leading to a higher operating expenditures. This demand begins with the planning department and extends to the building department as new developments are initiated. Ultimately, it will impact all departments responsible for servicing these established developments, including snow removal, lawn maintenance, water sewer services, road maintenance, streetlight energy costs, bylaw enforcement, fire services, capital renewal provisions, administrative and billing functions. It's important to note that while growth revenues may be collected upfront and are cumulative, once a critical mass is achieved, additional costs for staffing and equipment will need to be incurred to maintain current service levels. Over the past several years, we've experienced significant growth, with a 27% increase in population from 2016 to 2021. During the same period, we also saw a 17% increase in weighted assessment. From 2022 to 2025, there has been an additional 23% growth in weighted assessment. In order to service this growth, staffing levels were reviewed as directed by council through an organizational review to develop a staffing optimization plan completed by Deloitte in 2023. They noted that the city's growth created a workload that could not be completed by existing staffing levels and recommended 24 new positions to be added immediately. However, to mitigate the 2024 budget increase, only 21 out of the 24 new positions were created, with varying start dates throughout 2024. Deferred positions were fleet supervisor, internal legal counsel, and cemetery supervisor. For the year 2025, four new positions were identified and deferred. Deferred positions for 2025 are communications coordinator, IT systems analyst, bylaw enforcement clerk, and a student planner. This brings the total to seven deferred positions, three from 2024 and four from 2025. Next, we have a chart that depicts a comparison of average taxes across the region by home type for 2024 from the BMA municipal study. Thorold continues to be below the regional average for all these home types, and of note, BMA study shows that Thorold was the lowest in the region for detached bungalow taxes. This slide provides some reference indicators. A 1% levy change equates to about $222,000. A 1% net levy change equates to about $17 to the average residential home valued at The next slide highlights the interrelationships between the funding sources available. A reduction in one area must be offset by funding from other areas, which typically leads to an increase in property taxes. This illustrates the funding options for both capital and operating expenses. Some items, such as grants and investment income, are beyond our control. Therefore, we need to focus on areas we can manage to ensure that the burden does not fall entirely on property taxes. While using reserve funds for ongoing operating expenses may occur occasionally, it is a short-sighted decision. Consider it a best practice. This approach is also unsustainable. The net levy budget as presented amounts to $24.4 million. Transportation, winter control, and fire expenses amount to 46% of the total net expenditures. Next, I'd like to highlight some major impacts. We'll start off with wages. Salaries, benefits, and honoraria costs in the proposed budget account for 49.2% of the gross expenditures. Impacts stem from increases in wages and benefits for existing approved staff to cover contractual and approved increases, step increases, statutory, and health benefits. A significant impact this year is the annualization cost from 21 new positions created in 2024 as recommended in the organizational review. As per our longstanding practice, positions start at various points throughout the year, meaning the annualization costs for positions included for less than a full year in 2024 are incorporated in 2025 budget. Two pre-approved positions, being bylaw enforcement clerk and fire prevention officer, have also been included and funded from the residential licensing. The total net of funding from the building reserve, water sewer, and capital budgets, and residential licensing fees is projected to increase by $1.47 million. For 2025, as mentioned earlier, seven positions recommended by the organizational review have been deferred. The next impact is talking about the asset renewal. This chart illustrates our progress in sustaining non-water and sewer assets. Please note that these are annual estimated totals. The green bar represents the current budget provision, yellow bar shows the amortization trends based on historical costs, and red bar indicates the annual funding required to maintain our assets based on their replacement costs. We need an additional $6.8 million per year to fully fund our assets. As you can see, we are underfunding in every category. Sustaining our assets is crucial, not only as a best practice, but also as provincially mandated obligation. Asset renewal funding ensures that we can repair and replace assets in a timely manner without significantly impacting the levy. Our asset management plans for both core and non-core infrastructure are complete. Currently, the city is working on phase three of the asset management plan as mandated by the province, which involves proposing levels of service, lifecycle management, and financial strategy. To address the shortfall, a 15-year phase-in plan has been adopted, with 11 years remaining. Again, we should anticipate increased requirements in future years resulting from impacts from inflation, the assumption of assets in new subdivisions, and building of new assets. This will increase the shortfall and funding requirements. Net impact is currently $742,000. Of note, with the completion of the new municipal operations center and fire station and the assumption of new subdivisions, our shortfall has increased by $500,000 from the 2024 levels. In 2024, we had capital funding in our base budget for purchases of vehicles, equipment, and facility-related upgrades. The levy amounts have been reduced by $215,000 as a mitigation item. Best practice would be to retain the base budget level and transfer it to reserves for replacement provisions. This shows the Canada Games Park impact. Net operating expenses are forecast to increase by $76,000, subsidized ice by $21,000, unsold ice by $29,000. Track rental is eliminated, resulting in a forecasted decrease of $17,000 for a net levy impact of $109,000. City provides multiple grants, which will have a levy impact of $71,000. So the first one, city provides a grant to the library, which is increased by 2% to $821,712, lower of CPI or 3% as of October 2024, when the budget was submitted. The grant was capped at 2% per the motion 15.2 passed on March 19, 2024, council. This will have a levy impact of $16,000. City provides a grant to the senior center, resulting in a levy impact of $54,000 due to rent elimination, increased payroll costs, and program instructor costs. All other items are budgeted at 2024 levels. City's grant to the Thorold Museum amounts to $50,000, an increase of $40,000, with $20,000 coming from the reserves for carryforward from 2024, and the remaining $20,000 from the Pat Stone Grant Elimination. This grant has not been used since 2022. City will also provide $300,000 for a physician recruitment program, which is fully funded from the reserves for 2025, with a levy impact of zero. Canada Day event has a total budget of $111,000, with a projected increase of $9,000 in sponsorships and grants, and $8,830 from reserves, and $21,000 increase in expenditures. This will have a net levy impact of $3,000. A number of other expenditures will also see changes in the budget levels required from 2024, such as insurance, Port Robinson ferry wages, postage medical fees for mental health wellness for the fire department, and utilities with a levy impact of $193,000. The forecasted occupancy costs for the new development services office at 8 Carlton will also, for utilities, cleaning, and other expenses, are $38,000. This will be offset by $21,000 in non-levy funding from the building reserve. Net occupancy costs for city hall are projected to increase by $37,000 because the building department has relocated to the new development services office, and we can no longer access the non-levy funding from the building reserve. This will have a net levy impact of $54,000. Several other expenditures will also see changes in the budget levels. This includes IT contracts, audit fees, landfill contracts, and the community incentive program. CIP program is forecasted to increase by $388,000, with $347,000 coming from the reserves. This is a one-time reserve funding, which will have an impact to the future budgets. These adjustments will result in a levy impact of $143,000. Investment income revenues are projected to decrease by $125,000 due to declining interest rates and lower cash balances. This will also pose a risk to the future budgets as interest rates continue to fall. Payments in lieu of taxes, along with penalties and interest on taxes, are forecasted to increase by $254,000. Again, this may pose a risk to the future budgets as tax sales proceedings should reduce the level of arrears. The net benefit to the levy is $133,000. Fee and fine-related revenues are forecasted to increase in planning, bylaw, and fire, with a benefit to the levy of $56,000. Residential licensing and property standards, net of funding, will have an impact to the levy in the amount of $119,000. The report also includes listings totaling $10.5 million in reductions, deferrals, and reserve funding used to reduce the levy impact. Operational deferrals include $500,000 from the capital renewal provision and $200,000 for the Thorold Museum grant request. A total of $9.7 million in capital projects have been deferred, with the major projects highlighted on the slide. Presence of any item on the list does not imply that staff support the reductions or that items are unnecessary. Rather, the overriding factor was the levy impact. Council can review the deferral list as part of their deliberations. The draft operating budget as presented reflects a 3.79% departmental increase and a 1.2% infrastructure levy increase after a growth of 4.87% for a total net levy increase of For the residential class, the average home will see an $86 increase from the city's general budget. This represents a 1.9% increase to their overall tax bill. We have yet to see the final tax rate policy under the region's control. For the residential class, the average home will see an estimated, as mentioned, $86 increase from the city's general budget. Due to the increase in the assessment base and freezing of the levy amounts, we anticipate a reduction of $4 for the urban service and hospital levies. This represents a 1.72% increase to the average residential overall tax bill. For indicative purposes only, impacts from the region for regional general budget, transit and waste management budgets are estimated to result in a $176 increase or 3.64% to the overall average residential tax bill. Regional tax ratios are yet to be finalized, and there is no impact to the education rates as they remain unchanged from 2024 to 2025. Overall, the estimated impact is $258 or 5.35%. Total capital budget for new capital work in 2025 is $11.4 million, with 57% related to the core infrastructure. Carryforward projects are valued at $25.3 million for a total project slate of $37 million. Major new projects are Sullivan Clermont Fire Training Facility Station 4, Thorold Museum, and Cultural Center. The major carryforward projects are St. David's, DQ Road, New Mausoleum, and the Rolling Meadows Park. Over the next 10 years, we estimate capital projects works totaling $134 million. It should be noted that this is merely a forecast and not a firm commitment on timing of the projects. Council prioritizes projects on an annual basis. This report also identifies a total capital funding gap of $21.4 million that the city faces over the next 10 years. This gap will require issuance of debt and incurring debt servicing costs in our annual budgets, lest any grants or fundraising were able to secure. We need to remain aware of this today as projects are approved, as it may impact our ability to proceed in the future. It is essential to ensure that we prioritize projects and make decisions maintaining a long-term perspective. City is presently positioned well from a debt standpoint, with only $299,000 outstanding projected at the end of 2024, relating entirely to city hall. This will be fully paid off in 2026. In addition, we have financed a number of capital projects internally from reserve cash balances, with payback over a number of years totaling $12.51 million to the end of 2024, which will be recovered from future budgets with provisions in place for annual paydown. Also, in 2011, the city committed $5.7 million towards the new hospital. We levy $298,000 per year as a separate levy on the tax bill, which will continue till 2026. This depicts our reserve position excluding hydro. While we have an estimated combined available balance of $60.3 million, the bulk of the holdings, approximately 80%, are in development charges, water and sewer restricted or legislated reserve funds. The available balances for operating and capital are estimated at $12.2 million. Target for these operating and capital reserves should be $20.5 million, indicating that we are underfunded in our reserve levels. Staff would caution against further depleting reserves. Eroding reserves may solve an issue in the current year's budget, but will negatively impact future budgets. Additionally, the historic levels of in-year budget overruns are not sustainable, and we may need to consider scaling down or canceling projects. For the hydro reserve, the projected interest is at $571,000, with the utilization proposed for 2024 directed to debt servicing city hall, capital asset transportation, and capital asset general provisions. Support to capital funding from the levy is 2.3%. Since 2001, hydro interest has provided a capital levy support of $13 million. And we do have a number of risks and opportunities that may lead to a positive or negative variances to the 2025 results that we need to be cognizant of. Revenue and expenses projections and any in-year budget overruns or emergencies can lead to negative variances. New grant programs requiring municipal contributions or replacing existing funding and general revenue and expenditure estimates can be higher or lower than budget. Staff would respectfully suggest that it should be the budget that establishes service levels and that the in-year budget overruns or adjustments should be limited to emergencies, uncontrolled items, or grant programs, and not to introduce any new programs, projects, or services. Beyond 2025, we will continue to see exposure from interest income and supplemental taxes should cash balances and interest rates and growth decline. And this is the suggested process. Council is able to ask any questions or bring forward any item in each of the sections. Any changes to the draft budget are voted on by council as you go through the three sections. Motion to approve any aspect of the budget are final with the approval of the conforming bylaw at each meeting. Amendments to the budget report will be carried forward to the next budget meeting. These amendments can be reconsidered at the end of the budget process or immediately prior to the final adoption of the budget.
Thank you for the presentation, C2, and I'm going to open the floor up for questions on the presentation before we move on to the actual budget deliberation. Questions for C2? Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. Much appreciated. Now, we're going to move on to... Here's my... Now, we're going to... We have delegation. Report DF2 2025, respecting Budget 2025 at Thorold Library. And I'll call on Joanne DiQuanto, Chief Librarian of the Thorold Library, for her delegation regarding this report. Welcome, Joanne.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ugulini, city councilors and city staff, and library board members and friends behind me. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to present the library board's 2025 budget request. As you have heard me say year after year, the library is the heart of our community. I'm sorry, I don't have my slides up. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Because what I'm saying may not make sense. Okay, thanks. So, like any organization, the library does have strengths and challenges. We have a dedicated staff who provides service to our community from governance structure, and we collaborate with local community organizations such as the TCAG, Thorold 50+, Thorold Garden Club, the H Friendly Committee, and the BIA. The library, of course, faces challenges in trying to provide our service. We have an aging inaccessible facility with limited, no space. For example, the staff run programs in the meeting room and in the library proper at the same time. We also provide outreach to our community to bring service. We have to thank Mr. Holman's team and our partners who provide us with program space to do so. We are struggling to meet the demands for service. An increase of population and an increased demand for service, high student population, as well as our partnership, have brought more traffic through our doors and more requests for services throughout our community. We have always done more with less. Unfortunately, we are living in a time when that is simply not possible. We face inflationary pressures such as increased staffing costs, service and facility costs such as repairs and such as repairs and maintenance, utilities, et cetera. In spite of these challenges, though, and using our strength, the library continues to have a strong impact on our community. In 2024, our weekly visitors increased by two hundred and twenty seven people a week. The number of items used in the library doubled in comparison to the year before. Our active library cardholders has increased by two hundred and seventy two patrons. We have thirty three community partners, including local, small businesses who donate or provide items for our teen subscription boxes. So, the traffic coming through our doors is growing. Two budget options have been provided. Both budget options assume a three percent wage increase. The first budget option follows council's 2024 directive, an increase which amounts to sixteen thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. So, to meet this, the reduction will be in staff hours and services. So, first would be the elimination of a part-time programmer of a thousand hours for the year. This would result in a loss of ten programs a week. In addition, we would also lose staff hours to cover vacations, sick days, and to schedule staff to work at the library when the programmers are at an outreach location in Port Robinson and Thorold South. If the staff is working on paid holidays for events or running programs in the library with a high attendance, these will be affected. A few examples are the BIA's Easter egg hunt. Last year, we had three hundred and fifty six participants. Registration was at the library. We are anticipating as many people to have attend this event or more. So, I would have to staff the library accordingly. A third person inside the library providing service at the service desk, and two programmers for the registration to implement our own activities as part of this event and to help lead the event itself. We've also been asked to have a booth at Canada, at Sore Earth Day event and activities from eleven to three. So, two employees are required for health and safety at this event, plus the cost of supplies needed to run these activities. That means I need to replace those two employees who are scheduled to work at the library. So, to follow council's motion and to meet these operational expenses, the library will lose our community, activities, and partnerships. For both budget options, the board's capital request of ten thousand dollars remains the same. I'll discuss the breakdown and purpose of that in a few more slides. So, the second budget option is proposed by the library board. It is an increase in the amount of fifty seven thousand four hundred dollars plus our capital request in the amount of ten thousand dollars. This will allow the library to maintain staff and service levels. This slide depicts the board's 2025 budget revenue. Ninety percent is provided by the library's municipal grant. Our provincial funding is at three point four two percent, and our provincial funding remains at the nineteen ninety eight level. Council's investment into library services is critical to continue in maintaining these services to our community. A breakdown of the seven point two percent is as follows. So, three percent of the increase will go towards covering the wage increases, so this is estimated for 2025. Four point two percent will go towards meeting our operational expenses listed on this slide. So, in addition to the operational increase, the board has a capital request of ten thousand dollars. The proposed operational increase and capital budget work together to allow the library to maintain our service standards of sixties a week, fifty-four hours, and maintain our staffing levels, and be open family day, as requested by patrons. We will be open from ten to five. We are running a storytime in the morning. Service Canada has asked us to have an information table for a few hours to share resources on their programs and benefits, like the Canadian Dental Care Plan and Education Savings. The budget will also allow us to increase our print and digital collections by providing a second ebook lending site and more new items for patrons to borrow. This budget will also cover costs, increased cost of facility maintenance, which include a twenty six percent rise in costs in janitorial. So, there's been no increase to the scope of work for that contract. That's maintaining the same level. The proposed budget and capital expenses will also help us modernize our services. For example, patrons will be able to register for programs online and add that program to their calendar. At the moment, we use a Google spreadsheet. With the number of programs we run, as well as the participants, an online site is now required. Tools for staff include a cellphone for the library. Staff will be able to contact the library while doing an outreach program, once again satisfying those health and safety requirements, and help maintain our social media. The proposed budget also includes a summer student, so the library can continue to digitize our local history and make it accessible on our archive site, which is live. The capital grants will replace an outdated computer that acts as a server for us and stain chairs and tables in the meeting room. So, the difference in these two budgets is huge in terms of the levels of service we can provide to our community, to the citizens of Thorold. To provide some context for our budget ask, I've provided a 2023 funding per capita data collected by the ministry. And twenty twenty four numbers have not been released yet. The key point of this slide is Thorold Public Library is the lowest funded public library in the region. We are almost thirty five dollars per resident below our highest comparator. The social return on investment provides some quantitative evidence of the library's impact on our community as a whole and per resident. I will share with you one story, one of these numbers. Our patron, John, has invisible disabilities, and he looks a little different. Because of these things, he was made fun of all of his life by kids and adults. His parents passed away, and he lost his support system. He had thoughts of dying by suicide. John found community in our library. He borrows the library's laptop with data on it so he can listen to the music online that he enjoyed with his parents when the library is closed, so he can still access that. Thorold Public Library is open and provides a welcome and space for our community. The board understands that we are living in difficult times and appreciates council's generosity. We are respectfully seeking a fifty seven thousand four hundred dollar budget increase to continue to maintain service for our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So, I already know some of these numbers because I'm on your board representative from council. So, everything has gone up as far as your janitorial, your wages, everything else has gone up from your point of view, and you're asking us just to keep up with those increases that have... You didn't look for extras. You're not trying to get, you know, new TVs or anything in there. You're just trying to keep up with programs that the increases are coming, and they're not coming from you, they're coming from outside sources.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you coming this evening. A question I had, because I don't have the full information here, do you apply for the Canada Summer Grants for students? Is that something that you participate with? Have you had any luck getting that?
We actually apply for Young Canada Works. I've already put in our application, so that covers seventy five percent of the cost of our summer student. So, the two percent is sixteen thousand one hundred and twelve, and we're asking for the difference, the forty one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight on top of that and our ten thousand dollar capital request. On top of the operational. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joanne, for your presentation. I don't really have a question, just a comment, that I understand how crucial the library is in our city of Thorold and how many people do actually utilize the services there and the space it provides for our residents and especially educational tools, especially for those that can't afford to have these tools in their homes. So, I will support you because I know how important it is, so hopefully we can find you this money that you need. Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you.
Any questions further? Seeing none, Joanne, thank you for coming to council along with the library board members, and thank you for your presentation. Okay, we're going to move on to items for consideration. Yeah, I'm gonna... Can I get a mover in a second here to put the report on the floor? Please, Counselor Sentence and Counselor O'Hare. All those in favor? Wait. I just put the report on the floor.
Yeah, but if you're not...
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. So, we're not going to have any vote. This is just a mover in a second here to put the report on the floor. And now, we'll move forward, and we're going to... Do you want to start with the operating? Okay. We'll start with the operating budget.
Operating, then deferred, then capital.
Okay. So, we're the way we're going to go is operating, deferred, then capital budget. So, everybody has their binder, they see what's there, and on the operating side, is there anything that you want to raise? Go ahead, Counselor De Angel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought, I want a bit of clarity on, it's page eighteen of my budget binder, the physician recruitment grants. It says that we're going to contribute three hundred thousand to grants. Are we funding physicians right now?
No, we are not.
Usually, it's fifty or sixty thousand a year. I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, why are we putting aside three hundred thousand?
I can... I'll let Maria speak. I can speak. I think the reasoning is that we'll put money in for a program and we will... Every municipality, well, I shouldn't say every, the majority of municipalities now are all moving up to a hundred thousand. So, this gives us the flexibility, not that we have to be in the ballgame and be able to compete out in the marketplace, working through the regional recruiter. Jill.
Okay. Well, I... My question through you then is, if we took two hundred thousand out of there and applied it to the levy for capital infrastructure and reduced it, basically, we're reducing it by our levy by one percent, is that something that is eligible to do? I'll sort of make sure it's clear. It's taking to... Again, I don't think we're going to get three doctors next year or this year. So, three hundred thousand in a year where we're spending almost ten percent on the budget is not rational to me. So, I would rather take two hundred thousand. Then, you go to page seventeen, and you look at... It's the levy for capital infrastructure. So, I would rather take two hundred thousand off that levy, which impacts the general levy, but then the two hundred thousand coming from the physician recruitment is coming from reserves. So, you're then reducing roughly one percent on the budget.
So, you're taking two hundred thousand out of reserves that we... That money has just been, how can I say it, earmarked, whether it's used or not, it's reserve money. Am I correct? And you may want to elaborate.
I'm sorry, Counselor, you're going to take two hundred thousand out of physician recruitment program?
Which is coming from...
Bring that down to a hundred thousand dollars for the... And then, you're going to take two hundred thousand and redo and use the reserves that are already there to reduce the capital renewal? Is that...
That is correct.
You know, certainly, council, you're free to do, you're free to dip into reserves, you're free to reduce capital funding. But really, what you're doing is you're taking something that likely is going to be a one-time, like, we don't like to use reserves for ongoing expenses. And we've already seen from the slides that we have issues with our capital renewal. We're already, we put in seven hundred thousand. We really should have put in one point two million just to maintain where we were. So, can you do it? Absolutely. Should you do it? My recommendation is no.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to put, that's a motion I'd like to put on there. Again, this is a tough time. There's asks to increase the budget. We're at... The spending's at nine point eight six, and we just grilled, absolutely grilled the region last night with their nine point six, and we're at nine point eight six. So, and the region with their... With the increase in growth was at eleven ten. So, we have to make some tough decisions here. This is an absolutely atrocious year. There's a lot of stuff happening here, and we have to look at chipping away. Yeah, we're not even funding reserves properly, so to be a little less and at least help the taxpayer through a difficult year, because if the region comes back with another ten percent increase next year, it's going to be a really bad year for the people that live in the region here. So, I'm trying to mitigate some of the damage that they have done to our citizens here in Thorold, so I'm trying to look at ways of reducing that.
Maria, do you want to comment on that, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. If I could just sort of talk about growth a little bit. And growth comes at a cost. We provided you with a slide that shows the impact of growth and the need to service that growth. Years ago, I was told that for every dollar in residential growth revenue you get, it costs you about a dollar forty to service it. So, if you look at our budget this year, the impacts from growth are self-evident and are the majority of the increase. So, when you look at the region at one point eight percent growth and the city at four point eight seven percent growth, our costs are going to be higher because we need to service that growth. I can't comment on why the region is higher with a one point eight percent growth, but I can just tell you that from the city's perspective, you can't take the growth and not service it.
Fully, fully understanding, but I'm just trying to mitigate and come up with some... I have some other suggestions, but again, I'm not very supportive of the budget as it stands. I think it's a little, still a little too high.
So, what do you... Do you want to put a motion on the floor and see if you get a second here, and we'll deal with it, because that's the way we have to do it.
I have no problem, Mr. Mayor. That's what I put originally. I could keep talking all day, but...
No, no, but we had to wait till we got an answer from staff regarding it. Okay, so your motion is...
It's to reduce the physician recruitment reserve contribution and use that to offset the capital renewal provision for capital asset increase.
So, you're saying to reduce three hundred to one hundred?
No, yeah, yes, that's right.
Correct.
I'm still leaving the venue there, so if we can recruit a physician this year, it gives us some flexibility there. I don't see us recruiting three physicians at this point in time, and the provincial government has also spoken that they want to help with physician recruitment. Hopefully, they, when they say that, they just don't say it, but actually put some dollars towards it.
So, do I have a second here for that motion? I see no second here, so the motion's dead.
No problems. Next one that I'd like to introduce is, I don't know where it's going to fall exactly, and if I could get some clarity. Last year, council spent nine thousand dollars on conferences and seminars. Is, what's in the budget this year for that?
I think it is department-wise, it's all in every department's budget. And also, you have to understand, Counselor, that our staff strength is growing. So I don't, I have to look into it, what every department is, it's all within different departments. But our staff is increasing as well.
Just, just interrupt, sorry. I'm just looking for councils, conference and seminars. I'm not looking for staff.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Minister.
Just the one, one item.
It's the only conference we go to.
I see eleven thousand.
Well, I don't know what the registry is.
Would it be safe to assume it's around nine thousand?
I would say yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's eleven thousand.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Okay. Well, I, I wanted to propose this because I know, I, I think it's important that counselors have technology that makes their job somewhat easier. I thought, so we got new laptops because the ones we had weren't very good. So at this point in time, I look at our organization, everyone, I shouldn't say everyone, I want to correct myself here. A large portion of, of our employees have cellphones to do their job. Now, council relies on a cellphone, and I, I think there should be some compensation, and I'm not looking for full compensation, but I'm looking, you know, a, a small stipend, like, even if it's twenty dollars a month or twenty-five dollars a month, to go towards a counselor to have that technology so that they can stay up to date and do their job. So my proposal was to give each of the counselors, say it's a three hundred dollar stipend, which is a taxable benefit allowance, take that from the conferences so that there's no impact on, on the levy. And then the second part of the conference is, because the library board's looking for additional funds, I would like to take this one year off in terms of us trying to go to a conference and use that to help subsidize the library in terms of getting their funding up to the appropriate level. This way, there's no impact on the levy. So twenty, roughly, I don't know what the number is.
You know, we, we go to one conference to meet with ministers, and that's AMO per year, and a lot of other municipalities in Agro go to more, so we already do keep it down to a minimum.
Yes.
And we do get value from that, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you can represent us through the region. They have a bigger budget, and they have lots of money there.
I'm there representing the city of Thorold.
Yes, but you're also a regional counselor.
So you want to take the nine thousand, so do I get a second or to remove the nine thousand from conferences?
And the reason I'm bringing this forward, it's a tough year, and I think we could sort of help our organizations at the same time work around that.
We got a second here with Counselor De Rose. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't support this. I've been very fortunate to attend a couple of conferences. And to be quite honest, I wasn't trained as a politician. I wasn't raised to understand how the function of being a counselor operates and who to turn to, where to seek sources, and who to find support from. The conferences that I have attended have been extremely helpful, and it wouldn't be fair to other counselors to not have that same opportunity. I won't be attending a conference this year, but other counselors may wish to, and the value is enormous, as we heard from our mayor, the contacts and the sources there. I wouldn't want to give that up and have someone else miss out on those opportunities of growing their understanding of how the municipal system works. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Sentence. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same sentiments. You have more experience at, you know, on council than I do, but that AMO, I wasn't sure what to expect. I'd never been. I went to it, and I'll just use the, when we met for the turf field. When you meet face-to-face with somebody and you have that one-on-one, you feel like you have a chance at getting those, where you're not just a name in the crowd. So the handshake, the meeting and everything like that, and again, I won't be going, but I, I believe we should have people there for, for this, so I won't support it.
Okay, so we had that. Go ahead, Counselor De Devene.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't support it either. I learned so much by going to that AMO concert, conference. It was a great way of doing business, meeting other people. I think it's an important part of Thorold's business to be at these conferences, be representative. So I think we have to keep that in mind.
Thank you. So we had a, so we had a mover and a second or to reallocate nine thousand. So if you agree with it, you vote yes. If you don't agree with it, you vote no. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion's defeated. Okay, Counselor, you still have the floor.
I'll, I'll leave it at that. It's, I have a few others, but I'll see what the rest of my council wants to do before I bring stuff forward. It's going to be a long evening.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak to the library while it's all fresh. I am on the board. I think it was a fantastic presentation. There is also path stones there. There is also other things that go on. I know the extra that they do on their own that they're not required to do. I know our staff is fantastic to them as well when they help out, but they are everywhere. They are at the BIAs, they are at our Canada Day, they are everywhere doing everything. And their increases aren't because they want to add more flair to their, to their budget. They just want to keep up with the increases that are there. So you have a three percent staff wages. You have twenty-six percent, I think, was the janitorial. Just to run at two percent isn't feasible, and things will be lost. And again, I, I use the library. I use the library with my kids. I didn't use the library a lot growing up. I was into sports, but not everybody is into sports and has other things. This library is used a lot. Her one slideshow showed us that we are the lowest funded, but one of the highest used of, of the area. So I would like to make a motion after everyone speaks, or do you want me to make a motion now? Whatever, however you want it, but.
Back to you for a motion.
That's perfect.
I'll just see if anyone else wants to speak first.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor De Devene.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the library also. I've been there a couple of times, even using the photocopying machine. I met people there that just moved to Thorold and, who aren't, aren't best financially, and they're going there, and it's so important to them, and it's growing and growing. And to be on the lowest, on number eleven on the funding capita is embarrassing for a city that's eighth in Canada, fourth in Ontario, and we're the bottom of the barrel here. We have obligations to our citizens to improve our library because it's, we're growing.
Thank you. Anyone else before I take the motion? Go ahead, Counselor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this as well. You know, there's such great work that's done at our library, and I really appreciate all the time and effort that goes in there. I've been down as well, as Counselor De Devene has said, and seen it just hopping with activity. It's, it's also a home for many people in terms of a place to go, a place to find community, share knowledge, share stories, and we should be supporting our library. And it is sad, as I've heard here tonight, to see that we're at the bottom of the pack in terms of, of funding. And, you know, the support that we show the library tonight is very important, so I will be supporting this as well.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, go ahead with the, oh, go ahead, Counselor Longo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment. You know, council said we wanted to keep committees and boards at a certain percentage, and, and they did their job. They came back and showed us that number, but at the same time, we don't understand the ramifications of putting that limit in front of them. And the chief librarian did a very good presentation and really grateful for that. When you show that your cleaning costs are, you know, ten times what we offered, you know, it's pretty tough. And I don't think the dollar amount is huge. I think it's something that we're going to have to find a way to do, but I'll, I'll definitely support this, this amount.
Thank you. Wait, did, did you want to speak, Counselor De Rose? You're good? Okay, before the motion goes on the floor, I, the clerk needs to explain something to us.
So, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So as Counselor Longo alluded to, back in March of 2024, council did pass a motion which essentially, you know, the intention was to cap annual budget increases for Thorold's agencies, boards, and commissions to the rate of inflation or three percent, whichever is lower. I, I believe it would be a reconsideration of that, which would require two-thirds vote to reconsider, to then consider the motion that would be proposed. So if you want, we can start with a reconsideration vote.
Let's deal with that first. Yeah, let's deal with that first. We'll follow your direction. Go ahead, Counselor Longo.
Mr. Mayor, through the procedural bylaw, who can bring that forward, the reconsideration? Or was it, was it a unanimous vote?
It was unanimous, so.
No, no, the support was five-four, if you look at it. That, that, that motion that Counselor De Rose put forward, that time was five-four, I think.
It was five to four, okay.
He has to go back.
So it would be somebody who voted in favor?
Yes.
That's correct.
I don't have it, I don't have it as a recorded vote.
But I distinctly remember it's unanimous. It was five-four.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess the question would be, does anybody remember definitely that they voted in favor?
Yes, mayor had voted in favor. I think you are the tiebreaker.
Can I ask for the reconsideration?
Yeah, do you want me to go back and look at the video to find out who, because I, I, it wasn't a recorded vote, so.
Do you want to do that? You feel more comfortable doing that? I think I remember.
You, you were in favor.
I did vote in favor. I, I did.
You can double check it. I know that.
And I can say now I didn't realize the ramifications, but, so I'm.
Do you want me to put the reconsideration, or you want me to look at the video?
I can guarantee the mayor was in favor.
I know I voted in favor. I remember that. Okay, so I will, I will ask for, for the reconsideration, okay? I need a second here for that. I got Counselor Sentence.
So that's the motion there.
So right now, all we're doing is asking for the reconsider.
Yes, you're not actually considering.
Then if we do pass that, then we'll move forward. Go ahead, Counselor De Rose.
Mr. Mayor, does that mean that motion in March gets defeated? Or is it just on this one decision?
Yeah, it's, with reconsiderations, it's a case by case. So in this case, it just allows you to reconsider this particular item.
Just this item?
For this.
Not changing the bylaw. Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay. Okay, are we good? We got a mover and a second or?
Who's the second?
Counselor Sentence, and all we're voting on is, is that we are going to reconsider, okay? All those in favor? Opposed, and that is carry. Okay, so now we can.
One last formality. Two, now consider it here and now, rather than, because notices of reconsiderations are typically done with notice.
Yes.
So to do it at this point in the meeting, it would be another two-thirds vote, same mover and second or?
Same mover and second or to, that we reconsider it at this time, okay? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carry. Okay, now we can get the motion on the floor from, from Counselor Sentence.
So I just, this is just on the operation one, right? Not the capital later on, or are we doing everything all at once for them? Okay, library, okay.
If you wanted to break it up, it didn't really, I can combine it. It's really.
Together? Okay, I'd like to put it all together as one motion, that we accept the seven point two or the request from the library as they've asked.
How it gets divvied up will be according to the two.
I just want to make sure it was all captured.
Is that correct, Maria? I just want to.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So your motion is to accept a presentation increase requested by the library?
Yes.
Second here for that. I got Counselor O'Hare. Any discussion on that? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to keep the suspense novel going, although we approve it, we could still take it away.
That's correct, until we do final approval of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
You are correct. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Hanley.
I just wanted to, okay, we're, as we get down to the budget, I was just going to reiterate, Counselor Longo said we still have a second chance to vote on this because I'm maybe wanting to find some money, I think, to cover the cost that I get in the capital budget.
And that's fine, Counselor.
When I get to it, I'll bring it up.
Yep, and you'll get that opportunity. Thank you. Anyone else? So we had a mover and a second or? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carry. Okay, so now, do you have anything else? Anyone else? No, that has something. Counselor Hanley, did you have something now that you want to address?
Well, if we could address it, I'm, I was looking at page forty, can I go down to page forty-seven in regards to the arena? Can we do that now?
Sure you can. Oh, it's capital, you, no, that's.
Yeah, we got to wait for the, when I'm on, when we're on the capital, I want to bring up something on page forty-seven.
That's correct, and we'll make sure you get that opportunity, Counselor.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor De Rose.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to special events and Canada Day celebration, I'd like to put forth a motion that staff be directed to carry out production work and services internally rather than outsourcing to a third party. And my reasoning for that is I think we need to give our special events coordinator, let him do his job, show their confidence in his capabilities. He's a well-rounded individual, and I, I don't think, if, if he does need any outside help, he can always approach anybody. But at this point, I don't think we need, I think we need to do this internally. We pay a salary to someone to do the job, let them do it.
And I will ask our committee members, because I think that's what's actually happening now. Am I correct? Because I sat in in the last meeting I was asked to attend, and it looks like between our committee there, which are all over there, and Jacob, they're actually doing that. So it's being done. Are you good with that?
Well, it'd be nice to have a motion in place, just to solidify it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to support that motion because I don't want to micromanage what our special events coordinator is doing. We've had a really good meeting with him. He will use some resources that he needs until he gets more comfortable in that role, and he gets more acquainted with different acts and people that he's going to book for different events. And, you know, there's a lot of things that he really can't do without outsourcing some of this stuff to other people. So that's his, his decision. He has the budget. We've had a really good wholesome discussion with him, and he's doing a lot more this year than he was last year. And if any of my other members disagree with me, they can speak, but I don't think we need to put that as a motion. I'm not going to support that motion.
Okay. Did you want to speak, Counselor De Devene?
Yeah, like, understood what Nella said, Tim and I, when we're at the meetings, Jacob does control everything now, and he's, he's doing a great job. And you got to give him a little bit of freedom to go wherever he needs to go and maybe get some help through an agent or somebody. So I totally support what Nella said.
I can tell you this. I talked to Jacob today, and he's already, he only has one band left to finalize. He's already booked the bands himself. And we, the bands are booked for Canada Day, and on the day before, the one, two are booked and one's committing, but they have to work out, you know, the, the pricing. So I think it's being done, Counselor De Rose.
I'll withdraw my motion.
But I know where you're coming from, and I think with the committee, they're doing that.
Yeah, I just feel that if you hire someone to do the job, let them do it, but I don't think we need external help in that respect. Counsel LeDoux invited us, offered to help him. He spoke at the last meeting and said he can definitely handle the job.
And in the meeting I attended, I can say that the committee, working with Jacob, they're doing an outstanding job, and they have everything under control. Okay? Anybody else?
Go to the deferred list.
Well, we're going to the deferred list, which is Section 4. We've done 3, 4, deferred. Anybody want to look at some of them?
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, you can ask, yep. Go ahead, Counsel. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just finding it here. Just a curiosity question. Eight Carlton Streets, second-floor expenses, they're $54,000. They're on the levy impact. I just want clarity, is that not part of the development, building and development services that's covered through their own budget as a recovery from the fees that they charge?
You want to mention that, Maria?
I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, when Ms. Shaw was presenting it, she provided clarification, because part of the expense for City Hall was funded by them as well, but now they have moved to Ed Carlton. That was a net differences. If we find, yeah, that's the...
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, does anybody want to speak to anything on the deferral list? Go ahead, Counsel O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I'd like to talk about the Battle of Beaver Dam's Park and some much-needed upgrades. I'd like to move a motion that takes some items off the deferral list and is funded to have completed in the park, things that are very crucial. For example, the park has been, the park use has been growing substantially year after year, and yet, in order to operate it smoothly, we've been struggling terribly with electrical, for example, with lighting, with even having decent concrete pads for our vendors. So I'd like to make a motion to have these upgrades performed in the park, to ensure that we're in a much better situation to present these first-class shows that we've been, that we are becoming known for, and that people are coming to Thorold to participate in, whether it's the community market, whether it's Canada Day, rock and blues, anything. Even the Christmas parade this year ended up using the park, and we could have used that extra electricity as well. So I do have a motion. I don't know if we want to just discuss this first, or put a motion up?
Well, discuss that, and then I will get your motion, because I don't know exactly what it encompasses.
Okay, so I believe we have the motion, and we could put it up on the screen.
Who's got that?
And it details...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel O'Hare, did you want this itemized separately or combined?
All combined.
Okay, I'll just have to do that. Was there a question about how it would be financed?
Yes.
I'll go ahead, and I'll ask...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To update the capital budget, we need it itemized, and I'd suggest your funding source is municipal land and building reserve, so you can't consolidate...
So we'll get this itemized, and we'll, so, and then you're saying this will be done out of that reserve, so it won't affect the levy, am I correct? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you want to speak, Counsel?
I'll agree with you.
I'll get you next, Counsel Hanley. Go ahead, Counsel.
I just have a couple of words through you, Mr. Mayor. We've been working very hard to get this going, focused, to start a market is not an easy thing to do. It's been sitting dormant for years and years. We put a lot of time, a lot of energy, the ball's moving. We gotta teak this a little bit to get, keep it going. I know myself, I ran on, my biggest thing was to get that park going, to utilize it more, to get the community together, to have more events, and the farmers' market. And now we're starting to get that, but it's imperative we keep this going, because in business, you don't want to stop and go backwards. We need to go forward and get this ball rolling nicely, because that park has so much potential, and now we're starting to see it. And the people in our community want that park. They want more events. They want to see it done right. We spent $2 million on that park. Everybody knows how great that is, and you can see the response that we're getting in the park. And people come up to us and say, "We gotta do this, and gotta do..." We know what we have to do, and it's important we do that to take that next step forward. So it's crucial we get this done.
Okay, Counsel Decker, and then I'm going to Counsel Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree we need these upgrades. Just to give you an example, we were using generators when our power would go out in the park last year, so we're trying to diminish the use of generators because of the exhaust fumes and running around unprofessionally to different vendors to, you know, get them up and running. There's no electrical at the one end of the park. This should have all been done anyway when our park was being converted to what it is. So these are upgrades that are essential for us to run the park properly.
Thank you. Counsel Hanley, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as Counsel Decker said, this should have been done when we'd done the $2 million expansion. I was critical of the work that was done at the time. I'm sure some councils might mention, didn't feel that we were getting a good bang for a buck with the amount of money that we spent. And if we're looking at pooling them all together, we're looking at $215,000, five separate items. So if we pass this, even though it's not final, you're looking at approximately a 1% increase to the tax base. So we'd be looking at a 5.99% tax increase, unless we take the money from the reserves. But I'm always one, we've never taken the recommendation of staff, and I'm one, I hate dipping into the reserves. We don't, never take staff's recommendations to build up a depleted reserve. We all want, not all of us, but some always think to see it's an endless cash flow. The day's gotta come to fuckload down, so it's a $215,000 expenditure. I'll wait till the final vote on it, but I don't know if I can support it in its entirety at this time.
Okay, I'll let, I don't think it's that much. Counsel Hanley, go ahead, Counsel O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, through you to Counselor Hanley. The ask, Counselor Hanley, is $121,000. So it's not every item that you see before you. We've broken it down to the ones that are most necessary, so it's 100...
Okay, I only mentioned that because you, they, you were asked whether or not you wanted them all encompassed into one, and you said yes. So I don't know what talks you had, but I see that in the deferral list under parks. There is the installation of Thorold's sign at Beaver Dam's Park. That's $10,000. Additional height lighting is 40,800. So Counsel Hanley, we're gonna put the motion up. I'm just saying, if you add up all the, so we're not encompassing all of them on the deferrals list.
No, that's correct.
There's actually several.
I'll let the motion go on the floor. You'll see what ones are included, Counsel Hanley. Go ahead, Counsel O'Hare.
Okay, so should I list the ones that I have? Okay, so we have additional tree and flagpole lighting at $20,000. Installation of the Thorold sign at the Battle of Beaver Dam's Park, $10,000. Additional hydro throughout the Battle of Beaver Dam's Park for events, $41,000. And the final one is the additional concrete pads at the Battle of Beaver Dam's Park for events at $50,000. And that's it.
So the total is?
121.
And that would come, based on the motion, to come out of, can you tell us again, I'm sorry, Maria?
Municipal land and building reserve.
Municipal land and building reserve.
So if you wanted to do them separately, like Maria said, separate mover and secondar for the first one, I'll put it up on the screen, and then you'll go through.
All four can go together.
Can you redo them together, or would you prefer them done separate, Maria? Are you good with the motion together?
As long as I have them itemized on...
On the motion.
On the motion, that's fine. I don't need them voted on separately, because you have an opportunity at the end to vote on them again.
Exactly. Okay, they'll be itemized as those items in the motion.
Just one question, please.
Go ahead, Counsel Hanley.
Just a quick question, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you. In regards to, it just says additional tree and flagpole lighting, it doesn't specifically say Battle of Beaver Dam's Park, so any monies that were there, was that specifically designated for Battle of Beaver Dam's Park? Was this additional tree and flagpole lighting for other parks, like MacMillan Park, Selwyn Park, was it specifically designated for that?
It's strictly Battle of Beaver Dam's, Counsel Hanley.
Thank you.
Okay, so he's putting all that together. Is there anybody in the meantime that want to speak on something else while we get that motion together, so that we make sure that, I want to make sure it's right before we comment on it. Go ahead, Counsel Longo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask the Director of Finance a question regarding this reserve fund that we want to take this money. What is your opinion on the health of that reserve and the ability to finance these from that reserve?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have $1.2 million in the reserve now. It is, you know, specifically for these types of works. We know that our reserves are underfunded by about $8 million in total, so, you know, it's either, if Council wishes for the project to go forward, we can either add it to the levy, or you can use the reserve.
Okay, you got it? Okay, and let's get it up. The motion be amended to include the following clauses. And those are the projects, okay? The four projects. You're moving that to have a secondar for that, Counsel Deroz? And that would be coming out of the municipal land and building reserve? That's the way the motion's crafted. Counsel Deroz, and then Counsel Sentence.
Yeah, I just, I have a hard time going in, dipping into reserves, and I don't want to add to the levy. Is there any way we can make it more palatable by taking away number four? Is that a necessity right now? That's my question. Why is it a necessity? If someone can explain it to me. What we've done without the pads, why is it a necessity?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counsel Deroz. Counsel Deroz, the, both food vendors and the patio require the concrete pad, and we've had great success with the patio. It's been overly crowded. We need to expand it, and some food vendors have had to make do without it, and it actually is mandated, so we do need it.
It's mandated by who?
Health and safety.
I'm surprised environmentalists would take away grass and put cement, Mr. O'Hare.
Go ahead, Counsel DeAngelo.
Well, if I can add a little bit...
Oh, I'm sorry, I have Counsel Sentence.
I was just gonna add, it's not health and safety, it's the public health.
Public health.
Public health. So what happens, the original pads were installed back in 2000, between 2006 and 2010, because the problem was, when you had food vendors, they would have to bring planks or four-by-eight sheets of plywood, put it on the ground, so that, for public health reasons. So the idea was to build pads, and it was to be continuous, to build more, so when you have bigger events, they have a place to go. Again, as Counsel Hanley mentioned, when they bid the $2 million reinvestment into the park, they left out a lot of critical things that make the park successful, and that was one of them, is to do that. And the other one was the electrical, to make sure that you don't have generators just going constant, it's very loud, and they're, you know, not as reliable as if you had actual plugs there were. So to me, it's very critical to move that forward. Again, some, you know, it's a necessity, it's coming out of reserves. I'm not happy about it coming out of reserves, but it is what it is, and it needs to be done. Should have been done a long time ago.
Counsel Sentence, and then I'll go to Counsel Deroz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll support this. The success of everything going on, like you said, it should have been done before, but we're here now. Let's get this done and make the park even better and our events even better, so I 100% support this.
Go ahead, Counsel Deroz.
I was just gonna comment on these things, that if we don't do that, it limits our growth, and that's what we don't want to do. We need these things to grow, so they're all important.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's the motion. I got a mover and a secondar. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carry. Okay, anyone else for anything on the deferrals? I don't see any.
No.
Are we moving the capital? Did you have anything on the deferral?
A question, so I just had a question. Is that coming from reserves then, or is it going on the levy?
It's coming from reserves. It's not going on the levy, okay? That was in the motion, Counsel. Okay, capital. I think Counsel Hanley had something on capital. We're heading to capital now, so if you want to bring that up, now's the time.
Page 47, please, of capital, I believe it is. Just let me get it here.
Go ahead.
And I believe page 47, and it's regards to facility reuse strategy, $80,000.
Right.
Can we not delete that in its entirety for the simple reason that the, I don't believe the Doerty Arena, it says the Doerty Facility Reuse Strategy. I don't believe the Doerty needs to have a reuse strategy, and we've basically mothballed the James White Arena. Can we take that $80,000 of the capitals and use it to offset, or to put it into a reserve to offset the costs, for example, like Beaver Dam's Park? You look on page 47.
Do you want to comment? No, does Maria or Jeff want to comment on that?
Yeah, it's, it says...
Well, I'm gonna get your comment here from staff, Counsel.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm assuming Counsel, you're looking at the first item on page 47?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that money was approved back in 2021. We haven't spent it yet, and it has to do with the next stages for the White Arena. And it involves bringing in a consultant and meeting with community groups to decide what the best use of that property will be.
Haven't we already done that, though?
It is an item in your strategic plan, but if you, we're happy to take Counsel's directions if you want to defer.
Okay, if I just comment on that, thank you. Is that, we've discussed this in length, and actually, we had just had, where supposedly there was a user group that was going to be in there, and Counsel basically voted to mothball the facility. Myself personally, I don't think there's a reuse for it. We need to think outside the box, and, you know, I've said to Jeff Holman before, I think the city needs to look in and take a look into the use of what they call is selling the airspace. And I think we could develop that property. I do have some ideas. I'd like to present it, Counsel. I'm actually gonna bring a notice of motion forward in the near future, and I believe we could take that $80,000 and put it back into reserves. We don't need to do a reuse strategy for the White Arena. We mothballed it, we closed it to invest in the Canada Games facility, and I don't want to be spending millions of dollars in something that was used as the reasoning for shutting it, so that we'd go to the next venture. So, you know, I'll put a motion on the floor that we take that $80,000 for the reuse strategy for the White Arena and put it back into reserves to offset the costs for the renovations or for the upgrades at Battle Beaver Dam's Park.
Can I get a secondar for that? Did you want to second that, Counsel? Oh, go ahead, Maria, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, the arena comes out of the build, arena building reserve fund, so it'll stay, it'll stay in that reserve fund, but I wouldn't recommend that you take arena money and apply it to a park, but your overall, but your overall reserve position is benefited by that $80,000.
That's what I want. I want to do it where we put it back into reserves, and we take it right off the docket.
We got your motion, and we got a secondar with Counsel Deroz, and anyone want to speak to it? You've spoken, Counsel Deroz, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counsel Hanley. We've beaten this, you know, back and forth for years now. It was originally intended to be eventually torn down. I don't see going backwards now. You know, we're spending over $1 million a year in the Canada Summer Games, in the consortium agreement. We've spent $7 million so far. I don't see putting any more money into that place.
Okay. Well, that's the study we're just making, if you don't want it. You seconded it, we'll...
I'm just commenting on it, this is my rationale, thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel... Go ahead, Counselor's sentence, and then Counselor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through you to, to Mr. Holman. So this was a stu-, this was money to be used as a study to see potential future uses. Is that what this 80,000 was for?
Yes, that's correct.
So i- if we don't do this, what you're suggesting, Counselor Hanley, is we do this in-house to decide what we're going to do with it. But we'd still have public, public information sessions. We would still go through to see what people want to do with this. I have some ideas, too, and I, it sounds like we're kind of going the same way. But you're talking about doing this in-house and looking at, at future uses?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor O'Hare, and then Counselor DeAngelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to either Mr. Holman or Ms. Morrow. So if we take this money, 80,000, and put it back into reserves, and should the need arise again in a short time, next year, where we need to have the 80,000 to hire a consultant and do the work that you imagine we would have been doing, can we re-access that money from the reserves?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as long as it's still there.
Yeah. It will be.
That's council's decision at that time.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo.
Yeah, so the money is going to be used for the redevelopment of that part of the property. So it's in the strategic plan. So why wouldn't we leave it in the reserve so staff has some ability to do something as opposed to coming back later? Unless we plan on just leaving the White Arena there forever, I think this could be money well-spent if there's ideas that need to come forward and we need to have some work done on that that staff don't have the expertise on. So it doesn't make sense taking that out of the reserve. It's just shuffling money. And then we're going to have to re-vote on this again and rediscuss this again. So why don't we just leave it there and give staff some ample opportunity? And if it's there next year and nothing's done, well, then I would say take it out at that point in time.
Yeah.
Because are we going to take it out of our strategic plan, too?
No, no, I don't think we are because we've already developed the strategic plans.
Well, it's, it's counterproductive of the time that we spent developing the strategic plan and now taking this out. So I'm not supporting removal.
So that money's there as a placeholder. Doesn't mean we're going to use it. It means it's there as a placeholder. It sits in the reserves. It's not like we're depleting the reserves if we don't use it. So I, I would tend to agree with what Counselor DeAngelo said. Go ahead, Counselor.
The expert, Maria, what she suggests.
I like that. She's the brains.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there, I would suggest you leave it in there. There may be a need to hire consultants. There may be a need to demolish the building and incur demolition costs. So, you know, leave it there. If you, if you don't spend it, you don't spend it.
It still stays in reserves, Counselor. Okay, so Counselor Hanley, it's your motion?
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Okay, thank you, Counselor Hanley. Is there anyone else on the, on the capital deferrals? Or capital or capital deferrals?
Capital.
Right? Capital. Go ahead, Counselor Longo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page 48, just a question for staff. Second item, is it turf field design? You know, we see these every once in a while where we approve it, and then nothing's spent in the, the year that we've approved it. So I'm just wondering if I could just get a brief update on where the turf field design stands at this point.
That's, Jeff, can you fill us in on that? And, and I know there's a placeholder further in the document that maybe you can address as well. Or Sean, between both of yous, I think this is important because the community is very anxious regarding this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So far, the progress has been that we've had approval by council for a location for the park. We have then prepared an RFP, and it closed two weeks ago to, to hire a consultant to help us design that facility, including whatever we need in terms of change rooms and so forth. And that should be coming to council next council meeting.
And that detailed design has to be sent to the province as well because of an application. But we can go further. Can we go to the page where it shows the, getting all this done this year and hopeful if we're lucky to get money where it's placeholdered for next year, am I correct? I just want everybody to make sure we're all on the same page here in case you get asked questions in the community.
Thank you for reading my mind, Mr. Mayor.
I know. It's near and dear to our hearts, Counselor.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe I could help. Page 75 is the capital forecast. You'll see that there's an item in there for turf field construction. The project's $5.5 million, of which most of it is development charge money. The thought process from staff perspective was that we would complete the public engagement, detailed design, cost estimates this year, remembering, of course, that we also sought approval from council to apply under the CSRIF Funding Grant Program to see if we can get some additional funding to make up the $1.3 million shortfall that we would need to fund the project. So the, the thought is that we complete the design and the process this year, get accurate cost estimates, and then look to build the facility in 2026.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can pass the budget now.
I knew.
I'll second it.
No, I knew that that was an issue that you and I have been dealing in answering a lot of questions. So, Counselor DeRose, you had your hand.
Yes, Mr. Sean, just one quick question. Sean, can we do that in-house? The design, the bare engineers, or is that possible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think so. We're, we're going to, we're going to participate. We're certainly going to lead the discussions in terms of the PICs and any input we get from any of our stakeholders. But in terms of the actual layout and the design, I think that's something that, that we really should have an architect on board for.
I, I would just think it's been done so many times throughout Canada that there would be data there that would support.
That will help in, in the design costs, I'm sure, just like firehalls and different other things, you know.
Thank you.
Maria, can you give us, or Seth, to give us an overview of where we're at, at this point in time? Go ahead, Counselor DeAngelo. Do you have a question?
Well, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with moving forward with the design work for the turf field. That's something I've been pushing for, too. Just, and I don't want to put our Director of Operations on the, the hot seat here, but can you just maybe give us an update what's going on with the turf field, with the school board? Because I know the committee hasn't met, and I just, if you can give us any insight, because I, I still think we need to address that and either conclude it or, or see what the school board wants to do there. Because there, there was an option there. You know, wouldn't it be great if we ended up with two turf fields in the same year in, in our community? If that's possible, one paid for.
No, that's a good question. And I'll ask Jeff if he can give us an update. I, I don't know if there is an update, but I'd-
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. The working group has met once to determine what the configuration of the, of the field might be. And we have asked the school board to help us determine what they wanted to have included in the scope of their project. Obviously, the, the definition of the property or the property lines would have to be adjusted to match their design. And while we're not going to do the design of the field for them, we have asked them, you know, basically, how much space do you need? They were going to take it back, and we were working with Bob Dunn from the school board, and we're waiting for a response.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, maybe if we could sort of put product a little bit so the committee could meet just to get an indication. Because it's been quite a while since we've met.
No, no. Jeff, can you see if you can arrange that and get our group together? I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I can see at the south end of that field, that other project that, how many times have we worked? That condominium apartment is under construction finally. You know what I mean? Yeah, okay. Okay, so you can see what the change is and the impact that we started at 499, and we're now at 5.18. Discussion on that. And that was the changes. I would guess that were from the library, am I correct? That?
Yes.
So, because the other stuff was from the, from the reserve. So that impact difference of 0.2% is, 0.19% is, is for the funding that we allocated to the library. Okay? Do we, do we have any discussion on that? Counselor Hanley, go ahead. No, no.
I forgot to lower my hand, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
My arm got sore. I'll put it down.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Can I put a motion on the floor to approve the budget as is?
You can put that. Do you have a second or? Second or is Counselor's sentence? That budget as listed, which is 5.18%, be approved. Is there any discussion on that from council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Mr. Mayor.
Get that?
Mr. Mayor, can you just note me as opposed?
Yes, we, yeah. Okay, you got all that?
Yeah, I didn't have time to put it on the screen, but we've taken it all. It's passed as amended. I have noted.
Do I have to do anything else with this?
You do have to.
The bylaws, yeah.
Okay. Yes, please.
That happened very quickly, so.
I know. So right here, right? Okay, can I get a mover and a second or for bills 10, 20, 25, and 11, 20, 25? I got a mover, Counselor Decker, and a second or Counselor O'Hare. Again, that's for bill 10, 20, 25, a bylaw to adapt the operating and capital budgets 20, 25, and bill 11, 20, 25, a bylaw to adapt, ratify, and confirm the actions the city council at its special meeting held here on February 5, 20, 25. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. This, we don't worry. That was if we didn't finish tonight.
That's right.
Anything else?
Arjuna.
Right? Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is hereby adjourned at 8:12 PM. And I got to say, that's, we usually take two. Tonight, we did it in one because of the legwork that staff. Thank you, staff. It's never easy. But I can tell you as a council here that-